Rich Spofford.
Here.
Andy Grow.
I am here.
And the other members of the commission couldn't be here tonight.
Okay, are we, do we have a quorum if it ma- not that it matters?
We, we do, uh, we have four out of seven.
Four out of seven. Okay, sounds very good. Uh, in that case, I will turn it over to Healthy Sustainable Communities LLC to, uh, present their program for this evening.
Good evening, Chair, and thank you for having us here. John LaGarza, Health Sustainable Communities, also working with our team is from Green Top Research Plan. It is Matt Brinkley and Nikki Brinkley here. Uh, happy to be here and excited to, uh, do this work session with you from this evening here. So, um, can everyone see the screen still okay? I know it's the first time we're running through it here, so.
Do we have push got it on the?
You got a, a window pop up over there, John?
I do. Can you see that?
Somebody has to push the blue button.
It's not on my screen.
Whoever's moving the mouse.
Can you see that?
Oh.
Click, there you go.
All right, sorry about that, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, where, where, can you see that there?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Well, thank you, thank you. Appreciate, uh, appreciate everyone's time this evening here, so. And we appreciate the opportunity to really work on La Creole Node Master Plan here for the city of Dallas. It's been wonderful experience and a fantastic group of, uh, community members have been helping, uh, in this process here. Um, again, just, uh, starting off to, to brief, uh, the planning commission here that, uh, the original study here, uh, aimed at looking at the previous La Creole Node area, what you see up here on the screen is the, uh, the node that was again looked at, uh, about twenty, just over twenty years ago, approximately a hundred and twenty-two acres, uh, this area was studied, there was about sixty, uh, tax lots in this area. And over that time, really not a lot had, uh, transpired and, and moved forward far as, uh, and, you know, commercial and residential improvement in there, so the, the city looking at, um, what this could look like in the future, uh, aim to study this area. So this is what we're going to be talking about with you this evening here. Um, so just done a fantastic job of, um, really doing public outreach through this whole process. Uh, we started at the end of December, um, working with the city and the community, uh, establish a technical advisory committee, uh, for the project there. Uh, you can see the members on the right-hand side of the screen that were uh, on this committee, uh, and the committee met, uh, over five times. Um, and they provided input back to our team as we, uh, went through this process and helping look at what the future proposed changes that you're going to see tonight, um, and potentially help move this area forward through, uh, future development here. Uh, there was an open house held in, uh, August here, uh, again, was very well attended, probably one of the largest open houses over forty members, uh, uh, came and attended and saw the final concept that you'll see tonight that we're bringing forward here. Uh, we received eleven surveys, uh, through this process. One of the, I think, most exciting things you'll see tonight as, uh, there is a project hub that was created for this online site. So if you couldn't attend, um, live meeting there, uh, you could hop onto the hub and Nikki will be taking you through the hub tonight, but has everything that you're going to see here, um, that will be provided on the hub, so really using technology to be able to help people understand the whole process. So, uh, great job over the year of, you know, just providing great public outreach there. Um, just a little bit of background here, um, if you're not familiar, uh, where the La Creole Node was, um, there was also two other nodes that the city has had, uh, over the years, um, the Barbera Node, which I'm sure a lot of you, um, are familiar with, uh, really was a node that has really moved forward with, uh, development in, in that area, uh, the Wyatt Node has been a little bit slower, but, um, you have a great opportunity to keep that synergy happening, uh, around the Barbera Node and expand into the La Creole Node area here. So just looking at how that's going to connect for ours zoning and infrastructure here is one of the, the studies aimed at here too. From a land context use, um, the old node again was about sixty tax lots, uh, forty different ownerships, um, covered about a hundred and twenty-two acres, uh, this was expanded to be about two hundred and twenty-two acres here. Really looking at it from, uh, from the left to the right, you have general commercial to the west, commercial neighborhood to the southeast here. Uh, low density over on the east side of Polk Road, Road Station there and high density south of, uh, Ellendale and existing low density development, uh, predominated in unincorporated parts of the node here. So what would this look like? As you can see, uh, with the dotted line and studying this area, uh, potential rezoning in this area and work as some open space and connectivity, how that could all relate within the city here, so. Um, during the whole process of the study, we take into consideration existing, uh, conditions, you know, for development topography, you know, where you have flatlands, what's the slope percentages are. And you can see on this slide up here, uh, where the darker brown areas are, you have twenty-two, twenty-five percent, a little bit higher sloped areas, a little harder for development to take place in there. Um, a little bit of wetland drainage, which I think if you're, you're probably all familiar in that area there, but that was incorporated looking into the master plan of how that would relate to forest drainage and connectivity with open spaces there. And then one of the, the main things is the infrastructure, the sanitary sewer, uh, which you're all familiar with is one of the most significant infrastructure constraints there, that the city's done a, doing a fantastic job in, uh, doing the engineering and starting that, that work in the near future there, so to be able to expand that sewer of Hawthorne, uh, is going to create a great opportunity for this, uh, future area here, though. One of the other things, uh, as we went through the process here was just, um, the study, uh, from a standpoint, just trying to be, um, progressive and getting ODOT involved and looking at how Ellendale interacts with the, with the new potential zoning in there. The connectivity of Henkel, uh, across the lower part there, you can see on the proposed line there. And then Hawthorne and La Creole, how they both connect from a transportation standpoint there, so, um. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and, uh, Matt's going to talk about, uh, the four concepts that we kind of went through in the process here and presented to the TAC and to the open house and, uh, the final concept that we moved, uh, that we're bringing forward to, sir, in the future here, there, so.
All right, well, thanks, John. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, pleasure to be here and to talk to you about the, uh, conceptual plans that we developed and the preferred conceptual plan, um, that we ended up presenting at that open house back in August. And that is the kind of conceptual plan that we want to carry forward now through, uh, the public sort of planning process involving the Planning Commission and City Council. Um, and to, uh, just start, we started out with three preliminary conceptual plans and, um, through the TAC meetings and, and, uh, additional, uh, public feedback and also working with staff there at the Dow- at the city of Dallas, uh, we sort of combined some things through certain elements out and wound up with this, uh, preferred, uh, conceptual plan that I'll present at the very end of my part of the presentation. Um, but to begin, when we were looking at, uh, the conceptual plans, uh, we came up with some design principles that we wanted to work with to develop each one of them. We wanted to create a cohesive neighborhood where medium and higher density residential and commercial uses complement one another rather than conflict with one another. And that's something that's actually in the current plan for all of the nodes. This is one of the goals that you have, and that's a good goal to continue to have. Um, we needed to consider the impact of future transportation facilities and their impacts on adjacent residential land, and that's specifically relating to East Ellendale and the future, um, ex- expansion of that to, uh, carry more traffic. Um, at the same time, we wanted to avoid environmental impacts and use natural features as community amenities, um, something that could become a focal point, uh, for the node, and you'll see that in each one of the concepts that I'm going to talk about. Uh, we wanted to incorporate probable site development characteristics. So what are the probable site dimensions for the various kinds of development that can occur or that you want to occur in the node when we're locating these different land uses, transportation facilities and other public infrastructure? Um, we also wanted to consider the rate at which development might occur because the La Creole Node, um, hasn't had much development, um, in it since it became this mixed-use node. And we also needed to anticipate where public infrastructure was going to be needed, uh, because one of the things that's probably holding development back in the La Creole Node is sanitary sewer infrastructure. And so where we think that sanitary sewer infrastructure and roads might go informs where different land uses might go. Um, and finally, we wanted to provide a transition into the surrounding sort of rural lands that are just outside of the UGB because the La Creole Node is right here up against, um, the sort of northern and northeastern edge of your urban growth boundary. So I'm going to take you through these, uh, each concept, um, quickly. And, uh, before that, I just want to mention that there is a technical memorandum that has a bunch of information um, about all of this stuff, and I think Nikki might show it to you at the end when she takes you to the hub. Um, but the first con- uh, first conceptual plan, conceptual plan number one, it has this very large mixed-use area you can kind of see in the northern part of the node there, and it's all focused around this seven acre, you know, roughly seven acre, um, open space area that could be a formal park. And we talked to Jennifer at Parks and Rec about, um, what that facility might be like. That's something that you would do additional planning on in the future. Um, it has the least amount of commercial designated land, and commercial land is something that was, uh, it was a, it was, um, it was a repeated theme, I think, throughout a lot of the TAC meetings and going in, um, to, uh, the open house and that need for additional commercial land in the city of Dallas. So this one didn't have as much. Um, and, uh, next kind of unique thing about it is that it has low-density residential out there along the edges abutting, um, the UGB. And, uh, John, next slide, please. And so this takes us to conceptual plan two. Um, in conceptual plan two, I should mention, is not in the, uh, technical memorandum because it, it just kind of didn't make the cut. Um, it's very heavy on commercial land. Um, it would, it would address the need um, for a commercial land that was identified in the economic opportunity analysis that you just did, I think in 2019, um, was when that was completed. Uh, so it would have met that need, but it was perhaps, um, it perhaps had a little too much, uh, commercial. And so it ended up kind of falling out of consideration. Uh, next, uh, slide, please, John. Conceptual plan number three, um, has the second most, uh, most commercial designated land of the preliminary, uh, plans. Um, it also has a lot of mixed use or retains that mixed-use area as well as higher-density residential right around that public kind of open space, so right around that park. Something that, um, you know, is a good planning principle when you're talking about higher-density residential, where you may not have, you know, you won't have yards, uh, because you're talking about higher-density residential building types. Um, so having that central, uh, park, open space area is an amenity, you know, for everybody who lives there. Um, and, uh, this one differs a lot from the first conceptual plan in that there is no low-density residential in this plan. Um, it, the low-density was replaced by medium-density residential, so just higher and, uh, medium-density residential. And that's something that we heard through a lot of the TAC meetings, uh, was really the need for medium and higher-density residential as opposed to lower-density residential. And this leads us finally to, uh, conceptual plan number four. Um, and this is sort of the synthesis of all of those conceptual plans, the things that the members of the TAC, um, staff, the public liked about the original three conceptual plans and, and sort of morphed into this final preferred alternative. And, uh, this particular conceptual plan addresses that need for commercial land, uh, that was identified in that economic opportunity analysis, but it still retains a large mixed-use area on the south side of Ellendale. And this, uh, decision to move the mixed-use area from north of Ellendale to south of Ellendale came out of a comment that we actually got at one of the TAC meetings. I, it might have been TAC meeting, um, number three. And the concern here was we want to have, uh, that mixed-use area serve the existing higher-density and other, uh, you know, lower-density residential development that is south of Ellendale. And, um, if you have to cross Ellendale, it becomes an impediment to that kind of connectivity. Although, um, you know, we would like to see, of course, enhanced pedestrian crossings and things like that, still crossing a road that eventually will probably become a three-lane cross-section with quite a bit of traffic, um, is a diff- is a little bit difficult. And so keeping the mixed-use on the south side of Ellendale seemed like a good way to address that. Um, in addition to that, there's a good balance, uh, between high and medium residential, uh, about thirty-three and forty acres respectively. Again, uh, no low-density, uh, residential. And, uh, John, if you want to go to the next slide, I'll talk about how this all kind of fits together with, um, with, uh, transportation. So one of the things that we talked about a lot at the TAC that we heard from TAC members as well, um, as members of the community and also in discussions, uh, with Parks and Rec, was the desire to be able to have connections, um, not just within the node, but, you know, to and from the node. And so, um, what we would sort of envision here are pedestrian bicycle improvements on La Creole, um, as well as the improved Hawthorne, um, avenue as, as Hawthorne gets developed out and, uh, in the, in the road is rebuilt. And so there are some different alternatives for that. Um, you see kind of in the, in the smaller, um, uh, images there at the bottom, uh, right of your screen, uh, a couple of cross-sections, the first one being for a collector street that would have on-road bicycle facilities as well as sidewalks. Um, and the other for a multi-use path. And the multi-use path, uh, is something that we, uh, thought about incorporating into the node itself, running through that mixed-use area on the south side of Ellendale, providing connectivity from La Creole over to Hawthorne, um, and then going north into the node across Ellendale, um, in pro- providing a dedicated active transportation facility, going all the way up, um, to Kings Valley Highway and then potentially finding a way to cross over Kings Valley Highway, um, and connecting to a park there, there that is, uh, a little bit northeast, um, of where that crossing would occur. Um, the other two connections going down La Creole and Hawthorne then would eventually be able to connect into, uh, the Ricreel, uh, trail system as well as connecting schools on, um, La Creole and other parks and recreation facilities. So the idea was to provide connectivity inside the node, but then also connect the node, um, to other parts of the city. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Nikki, who's going to talk to you about the hub.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nikki Harbrinkley. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
I'm coming through.
Uh, so it's been my great pleasure to get to know the city of Dallas through making maps and doing land use analysis and taking feedback from, uh, the TAC members and staff and creating, um, a lot of different maps for you, uh, as well as a landing spot for all of this information. Uh, one of the things that I know is really important in planning, especially when you're talking about these, um, really complex, you know, uh, long-range types of plans, is to be able to bring all of that information together in one landing spot so that anyone, you know, whether they have time to attend all the, the meetings or they just have some interest and want to drop in occasionally and check on the progress of the plan, um, can do so, you know, from one website. So I've created a hub that talks first of, of all about the background. Um, and you'll be able to visit this and cruise this, uh, at your leisure. It talks about the background and the goals of the project, the study area, and it provides a number of different maps that you can explore through, including this interactive map which shows current conditions. Um, you can zoom in and, um, play around with all of the different, uh, tools that are in this. Um, doing measurements, um, making weather, um, all kinds of, of interesting things. Um, there's also links to, uh, previous documents, um, and news items as well as timelines and contact information for, uh, city staff who are leading the effort. Um, in the second tab here, uh, Matt mentioned earlier, there is a technical memo completed which boils down everything that you've heard so far, um, in tonight's presentation. Um, and you can read the, uh, technical memo with all of that information here directly from the site. And there's also a link here on top if you need to share that out. We go into a little bit of depth here with the conceptual designs, including what you just learned about is the preferred plan, which is number four. And we also, uh, talk about, um, the previous conceptual plans um, and the conceptual designs, uh, that we've discussed in the TAC. Again, there's the, uh, community connectivity that we worked with Public Works to develop. Um, and the conceptual plan, again, I've put into, um, a viewer so that you can explore that information in a little bit more depth. On the last tab here, we talk about existing conditions. So we go into depth on, you know, previous node boundaries, um, how those, uh, boundaries, uh, relate to one another throughout the city um, and take a deeper dive into zoning and comprehensive plan designations as well as those environmental conditions that impact, uh, development in the La Creole Node. So you can visit this site to stay up to date on all of the TAC's, uh, meetings and information as it comes available. And this is something that can continue to live and grow as the plan moves forward, uh, towards adoption. And that's all I have for you, so I'll hand it back over to John.
Thank you, Nikki, and thank you, Matt and, uh, Chair. That concludes our presentation here and happy to answer any questions or any, any information in there.
Have a question. Who owns all that land right now?
Who owns the land within the study area?
Yes.
Yeah, different, there's different, uh, tax ownership within the area there. Different individuals.
Yeah, I think there are forty
I think there's a
individual ownerships in the original node. I'm not, I'm not, it, the, I'm not sure about the expanded node.
Uh, just real quick, because I'm new at this, those private owners, what voice do they have in this whole plan?
Well, through, through the whole process, uh, the city's done a really good job of uh, bringing awareness to the public, uh, they've been notified, letters have been sent out, we've had open houses. Um, there'll be plenty of our, they've had plenty of opportunities to participate, some have actually showed up at the open house and have been involved in the process.
Yeah, the open house was well-attended, I think, by property owners within the node. Um, and so that was really, that was really good to see, uh, we have contact information from them. And so as we move forward through the formal kind of planning process, they'll get, they'll be notified of those meetings. And the way this would work, um, and Chase might actually want to speak to this. Um, but the way this would work, we need to update the comprehensive plan. Uh, there are parts of the land development code that would need to be updated too, to implement this. And those all involve public planning processes where this body, the Planning Commission, will make a recommendation to City Council. Um, you'll have public hearings, um, both at the Planning Commission and at the City Council level. Uh, so there are opportunities for anyone, um, to provide comment, um, you know, in support and opposition. Um, and so, uh, and hopefully there will be more opportunities than, than just those public hearings to, uh, talk to individual land owners. And, and we've talked to some who have unique issues, uh, for example, the owners, um, of the, uh, manufactured housing part on, on the south of Ellendale, for example, so. Um, you know, we, we take all of that comment, you know, in and, and try to, uh, come up with a way to make everything work.
I- is this an eminent domain type thing? In other words, this will happen? Or is it contingent upon those private landowners agreeing?
So the comprehensive plan would be adopted by City Council. And subsequent to that, and this is probably a question more for the city, um, the zoning itself, you know, either could, the zone changes that would implement the comprehensive plan change could be initiated by the city, um, or they could be done, you know, by the individual property owners as they decide to redevelop or develop, or to de- develop their land. Um, and I, I don't know if maybe Chase, you have an opinion on that. I'm not sure what the city's, uh, plan is. But in the past, the city did not change the zoning, um, on its own volition for the La Creole Node, I don't think.
Yeah, one of the, I guess I should speak into the microphone as well. Um, so one of the, uh, the key limitations is that, uh, a, a large part of the expanded node is not within city limits currently. It's inside the urban growth boundary, so we are obligated to plan for it. Um, but it's not currently in city limits, and so, um, we're left in that position of do we forcibly annex properties into the city and rezon them at that time? Um, or do we wait until the property owners want to develop their property? Have them come to us requesting annexation and rezoning? Um, that's kind of a policy level question that the City Council is ultimately going to have to kind of sort out. It may end up being some combination of the two, some carrot and some stick. We'll just have to see how that kind of plays out on the ground. But ultimately, what, what color, uh, you know, zone on the map of property is, um, that's the purview of the Planning Commission of the City Council. It doesn't necessarily, um, in and of itself, like, take properties from people. Um, the, the actual development of the property is really going to be driven by the property owners.
Uh, just another question, maybe for either or both of you. You both have been in this process for a long time. So this started twenty years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if, if anybody knows, what department in the city had the first idea? Where did this begin?
Um, I would imagine it came out of the Planning Department, um, since we were doing in nineteen ninety-eight, the comprehensive plan update. Um, there were deficiencies in, uh, commercial and medium and high-density residential identified in the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities analysis at that time. And so kind of the policy level decision that was ultimately made was to focus our growth into our three nodes, the Barbera Node, the Lockre- Note, La Creole Node, the Wyatt Node, um, to accommodate that deficiency by upzoning those areas for growth. Um, as you mentioned before, the, the Wyatt Node, the Barbera Node, they've seen a lot of growth since then. Um, La Creole Node, not so much because of the lack of utility infrastructure. And so part of the plan is the utility infrastructure, uh, you know, remediating that issue. Um, but then also, obviously, conditions have changed in our community since nineteen ninety-eight. So does the old plan still fit our community needs, or do we need a new plan? Um, it seems like a new plan is something that's called for, so that's where we are with this, but, yeah.
Last question, just from a high level again.
Sure.
This is a planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
And so does land use from a policy point of view in this example reside here?
Yes.
Or is it spread all over city government?
Um, I mean, each, each, uh, division is going to have its own kind of uh, finger in that pie, as it were, like, obviously, um, uh, Public Works is going to have some input in terms of, you know, what kinds of development could we service, you know, we may not have enough water capacity or road capacity for some kinds of uses in certain areas versus others. So there is some back and forth on, on, you know, Public Works on that side. Um, you know, parks, serviceability, those sorts of things. They, they do have some level of input into the planning process. Um, but there's also, you know, flow the other way. If the land use side says, hey, this is where we're going to be doing development, you know, Public Works, you need to find a way to get water service out here, you know, fire department, you figure out how you're going to build a new fire station to service this area, what have you. Uh, so it's kind of that, that two-way, you know, flow of information. It's kind of a collaboration, I would say. Um, but yeah, ultimately, the decision-making is done by City Council based on Planning Commission's recommendation. So, um, I would say that you have quite a bit of input.
And planning commission is typically, and processes like this are where community input comes in. The other departments in the city don't necessarily have that community part.
Right.
Basically, planning that drives planning, what the city is going to turn into. And then with that information, Public Works and Parks and everybody else can say, okay, this is how we're going to do that. And that's the whole reason for doing this kind of planning, is so that you you address the needs of the community ahead of time, rather than just having to to figure out how to make it work after people have developed this here and that there and and that there. It just it keeps things organized and flowing better than if it's just haphazard. But I hear your concern is that people who are, say, outside the city limits, this is being overlaid over the top of them. This is the opportunity for them to understand what's what the city is thinking of when those develop. But but typically, in my experience, it's until they want to do something with their property, that's when they interact with this plan and say, you know, this is what we want to do. And we've had a number of times the planning commission, when someone is zoned in the comprehensive plan as one thing, and they want to do something different, they come to the planning commission to process a zone change. So the plan isn't set in stone. That's why we have a planning commission. So if the plan says, okay, you can be medium density, and somebody says, well, I'd really like to be low density, or I'd like to be high density, or I'd like to be industrial, or I'd like to be something else, if it's a possibility, then planning chase basically says, these are what your options are, and this is how you go through that. And it's driven by the person who owns the property. I think I got that right. Anyway, so if that explains more for what you're concerned.
I think it does, Andy. The
I've been here for two years. And I look around at what we do month after month. And for me, it's pretty low level administrative type stuff. So just ring fence that. But in the background, we have these strategic issues and the old mill area and the homeless thing and all in the downtown area and so on, that we never talk about. Or very, very rarely. And maybe that's a natural process that this is long term planning, and maybe that's exactly the way that it should go. It is a frustration on my part, though, not to have a better grasp on who owns land use and is driving some of these things as opposed to just inertia, kind of doing it. And that's my frustration. And maybe it shouldn't be. Maybe this is exactly the way this process was designed and should work. But it just seems to me that we're spectators, that we're not driving anything. And again, maybe that's the way it's supposed to be. I don't want to hold our friends up here, consultant folks, as I try to learn. But I'm just trying to share out loud what I feel is a frustration that we're we're observers.
It's something we can talk about in the future.
Sure.
But this was an example of where I can express that.
Sure.
And talk about it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Did anybody else have any questions? Well, if we're all happy with the presentation, and I don't see you guys on the screen anymore. I assume you're still there. Thank you very much for your time and and obviously hard work on incorporating all the community involvement in this and putting this all together and applying your expertise. We really appreciate it. And it's something to think about. My only question was, you keep talking about this hub. Where is it?
I believe Ben has posted it on the website. But on the city website, I can also make sure that you have the, the, let's see, I'll put it in the chat here. And so
That's all right, Nikki. I'll make sure everyone gets a link. It is up on our website.
But I just wanted to, it sounded like this big thing, and I sounded really cool. And I'm but I but trying to find things sometimes on a website isn't always the easiest. So I wanted to make sure I was at least looking in the right place. So thank you.
Absolutely. And I thought the discussion was really great between the three of you. It's it's really interesting to hear, you know, what the planning commission would like to know more about. And that's that's really helpful for us. So really appreciative of the conversation tonight.
Great. Well,
Thank you very much.
If that's everything, then I assume we can adjourn.
Obviously, this is going to come back to you guys as a public hearing at some point. There'll be staff report and application materials for you to review at that time. So if you do have future questions in advance of that hearing, you can certainly reach out to staff and we'll do our best to answer those. Otherwise, feel free to chime in again during the public hearing. If there's, you know, questions or concerns, things that you maybe want to have tweaked or changed. Again, this is your recommendation to city council. So feel free to have as much ownership over that as you choose, I guess.
So it's if if I got this right, my understanding is that the option four was the kind of one created out of distilled and expanded out of the first three. That's the option that's going forward. Do we have a timeframe of when we're going to be looking at the public hearing?
So right now, the public hearing is scheduled for your November meeting.
Okay.
And just a little bit more about the timeline. So next Monday, the council, the city council will be viewing this same presentation from the consultants in a work session. You'll be seeing it as a public hearing in November. And then the council is scheduled to act on it in at their meeting after your next meeting. So if everything goes through smoothly by the end of November, this plan will be adopted. Now, it's adopted only as a plan. It's not adopted into the comp that we still got all that ahead of us. So this just says, yes, we like the plan. Yes, we'll adopt it formally. But it doesn't, it doesn't change any of the zoning, doesn't amend the comp plan. That's all yet to come.
Right. So basically, when we adopt a plan, when city council adopts a plan, it's kind of a a vision, this is the direction we're going. Actually, the nuts and bolts of creating the laws and rules that enact it, and all the input and everything else that goes into that, that I think we talked about that last time we talked about this, that's like a early next year, middle of next year, working on complaints.
It's a 2024 project. Let's just say that for now. Yeah.
Yeah, comprehensive plan amendments, you're usually looking at minimum of six months when you figure that the timelines involved with the hearings and the notices.
That's what I thought.
The plan that they had from 1998 and the 20 year span, nothing's happened. So, you know, not to say that it won't, but
Yes.
We have some property owners that are eager to develop under the new plan, but infrastructure is not going to be in place for a little while yet still. So we have some time to make all of the paperwork happen, I suppose.
Yeah. And I guess when we talk about when we consider this, probably is the time to hear from Public Works about how they've looked at how this is going to be possible. And if it's going to be, I assume if it's going to be possible has already been answered. There we go.
But I mean, Tom is here. So if there's a specific question, you could always try asking it now.
No.
Worst case scenario, he has to come back and answer it next time.
That's okay.
At least he knows what question.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Well, Tom, I tried.
Do you want to say something, Tom? All right. So and then it's then, of course, it's finding the money to do all the things to make all this stuff happen. That's not our problem, thank goodness. But we're just plans. That's one good thing about being on the planning commission. But anyway, enough humor. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? You've sat there the whole time and not said anything. Have you enjoyed the meeting?
Yeah, I'm just a homeowner.
Okay, well, I'm glad you could come and and watch how sausage gets made. All right. Well, thank you very much, all. And I will adjourn the meeting with this giant gavel. Thank you very much for coming, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.